We don't have any audience, but we'll start our meeting with the blood shoe flag.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Everyone has had a chance to read your minutes and operating statements from June. We're in line for a motion for approval.
I make a motion that we approve the operating statements, July 13, 2015 work session minutes, June 22, 2015 council meeting minutes, and Quantum's financial statement for June 2015.
I second it.
Okay, we have a motion, a second. Is there any questions? Hearing none, all those in favor, rise.
Aye.
No, it's motions carried. Okay. On the mayor's report for this month, it's kind of, I don't really have a lot other than we were going to discuss this month about what we did at Ocean City last month for the convention. I kind of made a rundown of different things that I attended while I was there. On Sunday afternoon, 2:45, I had a chapter officers' meeting that was for all chapter officers to have a meeting and get to know each other and bring everything up to date and how you should have your chapter meetings. So I attended that. That was our meeting. Directly after that, we had a Maryland Municipal League Board of Directors, had a meeting from 4:30 or from 4 o'clock to 5:30. And then immediately after that, we had a welcome reception at the convention center. It was 5:30 till 7 o'clock that evening that Ballmer Gas and Electric and Maryland Department of Housing was the sponsor of that. So that was a very good networking event. Met a lot of different people at that. Then on Monday morning, had to go right back to the convention center first thing in the morning to prepare for the general session. And I carried a flag for the town. Of course, we have to practice how to carry the flag and walk through the building. So I had to be there at 8:30 in the morning. The general session was at 10:00. And I think that is probably one of the better general sessions we've had since we've been going to last several years. That was a very good general session that we had. And then at noon, we had the Maryland Mayor's Association had a luncheon that we have every year. That's about an hour and a half. And that's just all the mayors of the whole state of Maryland that want to attend. And then that afternoon, had economic development for small towns. Tuesday morning, and then there was a lot of networking Monday afternoon. Tuesday, went back, 8:30, we had the polls opened up. Had to register because that was the day you vote for Board of Directors and the officers of MML for that year. Then immediately after that, we had a, at 9 o'clock, we had the business meeting for MML and the Board of Directors. And that's when we got our little additional little for the banner cities that Ellen has already put up on the board. So we got that. And then at, let's see, 10:30, we went to a meeting on addressing our aging water and sewer infrastructure. That was very interesting, how you can address those problems and some very keynote figures on how your water rates and everything have to be solved or how you can best try to address those problems and what you should do so that you don't have large bills all at one time. And I think Dawn was sitting in on that too, weren't you? That was very interesting. I understand there's some, a lot of discussion on that over the county and unfortunately, there were some people said that they were at that meeting that you and I neither one saw. So that's here or there. So that was a very interesting meeting. That afternoon, went to a meeting that they call Shark Tank Edition. And they had a couple senators and legislators there and they had, this is the second time they've done it. And we had a roundtable discussion. Everybody broke up into groups and how you would lobby a bill in Annapolis, how you would write up the bill, how you would present the bill, and wanting me to go down there to testify. That was also, that's the second time I've had one of those classes. And each time, you learn a little bit more how you do it when you go to Annapolis. And then on Tuesday night, we had the MML dinner and the swearing in of the new officers for this year. And then on Wednesday morning, right back down there first thing in the morning and attended a session of communicating any emergency. And that was how you communicate to your public and then also the news media. And then at 11 o'clock, this is the first time they've ever done it. Governor Hogan had 26 different cabinet secretaries. All the cabinet secretaries were in one big room and they had their names. And you had a chance to go and you could go to each cabinet secretary that you wanted to talk to. And you spent time talking to each one of the officers there. That was the first time that's ever been done. So that was very, very interesting and very helpful for a lot of people this year. And they said that they hope to do it again next year because it went so well. And then was elected back to the Maryland State or Maryland Board of Directors for MML. So then we had another board meeting Wednesday evening at 2:30. Was over at 4th around about 4 o'clock that evening and then having things packed up and made the journey back home. So it was a very busy time, a lot of very good networking that I think got to meet a lot of people, a lot of new people that were elected this year. And as far as the cabinet secretaries, I think that was great because we've never had that before where you had 26 cabinet secretaries in one room and you could communicate with whoever you wanted. So I think that was about an hour and a half and that was, that could have been at least a very good two-hour meeting, but at least it was a start and hopefully we'll have it, what they said we'll have it again. So that was great. That's about all I have for the mayor's report for this month. It's been a thankful, it's been a quiet month so far. So I hope so anyway. Month's not over. Okay, we'll go to John.
Okay. Well, tonight, we introduce ordinance number 311, which you all have a copy of. And it has not changed since the draft that I sent out for your workshop. So by now, you're all familiar with it. The brief history, because we went over this in great detail last month. On June 24, the mayor and I attended the WRCC meeting where this was discussed, how the county was handling or coordinating this with the towns. I stayed for that portion of the meeting. And then as a result of that, prepared the drafts that you've seen. That's the good news. I guess the not so good news is that only two of the towns submitted their drafts by the week of July 13. So the county is already behind schedule because it truly doesn't make a whole lot of sense for them to try to process one at a time. They're trying to package this up with the hope that the county will submit this to MDE and the FEMA representatives for us as a package. So that's still, I think, a probability, but we've still got this timing issue where we've got, the target date continues to be October 2. And I don't think that date's going to move. I mean, that's been in all the notices and that's a FEMA, sort of that's etched in stone, I believe. So the thought here is to get this, is to introduce it tonight, get it to public hearing by next month, which would be our ordinary cycle. If the county has sort of come around and we're comfortable, it would be, it would be ready to be voted on next month, right after the public hearing. If not, that would still give us a month to deal with any open issues. And under the charter, you can defer your vote for a designated period of time. So we'd have that option. And worst case scenario, you've got the ability and we'll advertise it as a potential for an emergency ordinance in case things happen, you know, rapidly in those last few days, just so we don't miss our October 2 target. So I think we're providing for the possible eventualities as to how this goes down with the county. And Pat Varga's been good, you know, good to work with. I just think he's got a difficult job at the county to try to coordinate this from different angles. The ordinance itself basically acknowledges the new floodplain study, the new floodplain maps that we've been looking at for a few years now. It appoints the mayor or the office of mayor as a designated contact person for issues that relate to the floodplain. We expect, and the county has told us, that even though it would be the Union Bridge Mayor, that the county would provide all the support. But nevertheless, it's probably a good idea that the local person would get the notice if there's some issue to be dealt with. This ordinance also amends the existing floodplain portion of the Union Bridge Code, which is Chapter 70. And really, all it does is change the references to the county code, which has been recodified and moved around a little bit and changed a little bit. But it does not attempt to change any of the substantive floodplain regulations the county has. So in that respect, it's really the same as it was. It's just kind of brought up to date. And then, of course, it refers to a resolution, which is also attached. And the resolution is the agreement whereby the county would basically operate and force what is a Union Bridge Code within the town. And that's spelled out in the joint resolution, which again describes the situation that we talked about last month. So that's up for introduction. And if everyone agrees, we'll advertise it for public hearing next month.
I think the county has theirs already on schedule for their public hearing, so.
Okay.
Everybody agree that we'll introduce, well, we don't have to vote on it. So this will be introduced and then we'll have a public hearing next month.
Okay. And that's all I have. And really, the county's got a couple of different functions. One is to get their own code to public hearing, like you say, which is what we're doing here in the town. And then also to try to coordinate as a group to get it to MDE so that by October 2, everyone's comfortable that we've got it where it belongs. I'll just keep checking in with them and if we have to make adjustments, you know, we'll deal with that when the time comes. But at this point, Pat didn't have any comments from me. I mean, he had looked at it and it's more a function of working it through the commissioners and seeing whether things change legislatively or whether FEMA has a comment or something of that nature.
Okay.
That's all I have.
All right, Jared.
All right. I just want to let you guys know that we're able to submit our third application for the trail. This was to our, this was our community legacy application. So like we talked about at last month's meeting, this will get us up to the number that Dawn was comfortable with that we worked with the engineer on to complete the full trail. So the three that we did were POS was one, Community Parks and Playgrounds was the second, and Community Legacy was the third. So those are the three we have out right now. And if, like I said, if we do get all that funding, we will be able to, according to the engineering cost estimates, be able to finish the full trail.
Good.
Yeah, that would be nice. It'll definitely be nice. But is there any questions on that project or any of the applications?
No.
You can queue any of them here. The only, I sent a link, I think you got the link. Because the Community Legacy was an online application. It wasn't a paper copy. So I did it on the DACD website and got a, and I know I forwarded to the town the confirmation email that it went through. And if I didn't get it to you, there is a link that you can go to to check it. But okay, we can print that out. But other than that, the other two are in the town office for review. If you do want to take a look at it and have any questions in the future, let me know. But if there are no questions, that is all for me.
All right. Thank you, Jared. Well, we have no visitors tonight, so we had no comments from the public. So we'll go right into committee reports. Ellen?
The MML convention, I got down there early Sunday morning and helped to set up the registration area for the actual convention. And then volunteered at the registration until the chapter officers briefing. I attended that with Perry. And Karen Doian, I believe was her name, gave a really good presentation on fraud. And they gave us several, a lot of tips and information to help make things work smoother and better in our, in our chapter. I then attended the financial statements 101. Karen Doian was again the presenter for that one. I believe I could now read and understand our financial audit. That was a very good class. It really was. It did help to, helped me to understand what it was actually saying in the audit, where before I just looked at it and made sure that it said there was no problems. Now I know what she's, what it's supposed to say. I manned the, Carroll County provided four booths for the municipalities in Carroll County. And by agreeing to man the booth for two hours, the town got the relief of not having to pay for my convention registration. And so I did man the booth for two hours. It was actually in there another time too. It was very good. Spoke with convention attendees about the different municipalities in Carroll County. They did a neat little game, asking questions about different things in, for the municipalities in Carroll County and spoke about Union Bridge too. I also was part of, as part of the communications committee, I was part of the booth that they had at the convention this year for the first time. Did a presentation board, which was displayed at the booth, which explained what the communications committee is and the programs that they handle. I helped to man that booth, talking to convention attendees, not only about MML and the communications committee, but also about the town of Union Bridge. And I like to take this chance to thank some of the businesses here in Carroll County. The town of Union Bridge gave me something. The Original Pizza gave me something. Buttersburg gave me something. And Stanbow's gave me something. All those things went into the Lumber Burger basket that I donated, that we gave, donated, that we gave away as our door prize for the MML booth. I attended the business meeting where we were recognized for the Banner City, Banner Town. And I'm hoping that we can work on that again this year because I think it's a pretty awesome thing to be recognized as that. I was at the new officials meet and greet, which is part of my duties as a communications committee person. And basically what that is, is we have the one lunchtime where we actually have a place set aside for newly elected officials to come, to give them a chance to talk to us, to ask any questions they may have, for us to give them the benefit of what knowledge we may have gained as an official, which helps all of our municipalities to work better. I attended the small class on grant application do's and don'ts. I was hoping to get more out of that. I did get some names and websites for possible grant opportunities to look into, to see whether the town thinks they're worth doing anything with. And there was also some tips to help with the actual applications and some various do's and don'ts. I attended the inaugural dinner just for the program because our newly, our president of MML wanted me to be there so he could let everybody know that he had chosen me for the chair for the communications committee this year, which is really quite an honor because everybody who volunteers for that committee from the entire state of Maryland's municipalities has a chance to be chosen as that. And then on Wednesday, I had a leadership meeting with Spencer Schlossnagle, who's our new president. And our theme this year, which I think is a really good one, is to rise to the challenge. And that's something we do every day here as a municipal official. We're actually rising to the challenge to try to make things better for our town and do the things that need to be done. I also had a Carroll County Solid Waste Advisory Council meeting on July 21, where they were discussing their solid waste plan they're presenting to the commissioners, the requirements to be able to implement programs decided upon, and their desire to move forward with a pay-as-you-throw program, which they're ironing out things in that to present to the commissioners. Anything that they present to the commissioners has to be decided upon by the commissioners and it will have to have a public hearing. So just because they recommend something does not mean that that's what will happen. Then on the same day, we had our Carroll County Environmental Advisory Council meeting where there was a presentation by Maria on the new recycling contract. We are now having to pay to have our recycling, part of our recycling taken out. They're no longer paying for most of it. However, they are paying pretty well for the cardboard, which is helping to offset some of that. And this new contract ties the cost to remove or the payment they will receive to the market fluctuations. Whereas before our contract, the county contract for recycling, they paid us regardless of what the market was like. And she went over what things are recyclable, single stream, and what things they can recycle at the landfill itself. Some neat things I found out that I found interesting that I didn't know before was that if you have the old monitors, the big boxy monitors, that you can take them to Staples and they will take them to recycle them. The landfill won't anymore because they don't have any place to send them. And if you have old towers, DVD players, radios, things with a plug and a cord, you can take them to Best Buy and they will take them, no questions asked. You just take it in, tell them you're there to recycle them. You don't even have to buy anything and they will take them and recycle them. So I thought that was pretty interesting. We also, the different committees did an update on the preparations for the MPDES IV Conference that the Environmental Advisory Council is holding in October. And I've given Dawn a flyer for that. That is for any and all businesses, not just businesses who have to have a water discharge permit. It's also for everybody else so that they can learn what kind of things they may or may not have been doing that are not really, that could cause us to get fined on our permit. The biggest ones they say should go would be service stations, restaurants, any kind of industry where they're using trucks to haul things, any kind of construction industry. Those are the main ones that even though they may not have to have a discharge permit, what they do can really negatively impact if they don't do it the proper way. And then the MML Fall Conference is in October, the 26th through the 28th. Are you planning to attend that this year, Perry?
Yes.
Good. Okay. That's where they put their list together of the legislative initiatives that they want to follow and either pursue for good or bad. And just on a side note, the Carroll County, Carroll County 4-H and FFA Fair starts August 1st and runs through the 8th. And this year, they're doing a really neat thing where if you take five canned items in and put it in their wheelbarrow, they have a wheelbarrow, a wagon, and something else that they're raffling off every day. So you can take your food in to help feed the county or you can actually buy tickets. I forget what the cost of the tickets were. And I gave Dawn a poster to put on our door for that also. And I think that's enough.
Okay. Before I get into my classes, I have a list of lights that need to be fixed. I don't know if I should give it to you or if I should check them again. Like the last time, I tied a ribbon around the base of the post anyway. So, okay. Okay. Well, at the convention, I attended seven classes. The first one was on Sunday. It was called Getting Engaged with Civic Groups. And we talked about getting involved with the different civic groups within our communities. Some of them were ones I hadn't actually thought of. I thought of more things like the Lions Club, but they were talking about PTOs, boosters at the high school, rec council, different things like that, churches and museums. And the class that I attended said that a lot of the municipalities actually have scheduled meetings for a certain night for, you know, each civic group in their larger municipalities so that they would not be inundated with a lot of content on the regularly scheduled council meeting. The second class that I attended was 7:30 a.m. class on Monday morning. It was a walking meetings class. And we walked around the convention center several times during the meeting. And this just encouraged walking meetings beyond formal council meetings. I know we've talked about that before, about walking meetings. They said if you need to meet with a contractor or consultant, just, you know, if it's going to be a five, 10, 15 minute meeting, why not walk around your town and discuss things? And, you know, they did suggest we could still do walking council meetings, but it would be subject to open meetings and we would have to advertise and such. The third class I took was small town sustainability. And we talked about making environmentally green choices within our communities for the residents and for town buildings. And one community said they actually have a Facebook group for backyard produce exchange where they swap and share extra produce within their communities from their gardens. Someone else suggested that they do optional group residential purchases for items such as solar panels for homes, large recycled totes and compost bins. And this would be something that like kind of, I guess, the residents may be arranged on their own. The town wasn't paying for these, but they were just getting group and bulk deals. The fourth class I took was five things municipalities can do to improve community health. And I think that was only a 30-minute class. I like those little 30-minute classes because they had a lot of information. And they talked about getting the community healthier and healthier lifestyle and suggested things like having a mobile truck come in and delivering or setting up for fresh fruits and vegetables. And I thought, how, you know, we have now have the corn, which I think is wonderful for residents who want to get corn on the cob. They have it at the Stanbow's parking lot in the back of a pickup truck. They suggested that maybe the mobile truck would accept SNAP benefits just so it would go further for other people. I would like to see the truck at Stanbow's actually include other things, maybe tomatoes, you know, zucchinis.
I guess it depends on what he has in his garden.
Right, exactly. But I thought, I would love to see that expand because I thought that's, you know, that's great for the residents of the town, especially the ones who don't have cars. And the only store in town is the Dollar Store and they don't sell fresh produce. They said some farmers markets have been able to get donations so, and funding so the residents can use their SNAP benefits, but also receive special discounts, like spending $20 but only having to pay, use $10 of their SNAP benefits. It suggested that when you have any kind of town sponsored activities or events to offer healthier choices for food. Then I took the economic development for small towns. And I liked that, that class a lot. They had a lot of different ideas. They said some municipalities work with the local merchants and offer discount vouchers that they hand out the parking garage when they're leaving. And we don't really have a parking garage, but if, you know, maybe the business association would do a flyer with advertising and coupons on it and maybe update it monthly, they can maybe hand them out and get the customers to come back. They also suggested that by using social media, they would advertise vacant businesses. And while we were in the class, someone said, well, you know, we have a vacant restaurant. We can't find anybody to move into it. And someone else said, I know somebody who's looking for a vacant restaurant. So right then and there, there was, you know, networking, going on the class. And that's exactly, you know, what they were looking for. Another community had a soap maker and someone who sold coffee beans and coffee. And the two businesses got together and came up with a local coffee scented soap to sell. They said, somebody said that Tawny Town had a history of Tawny Town project at the local schools. It was open to elementary, middle, and high school aged children. And they had to visit the local businesses to get the information that they needed to complete the project. And I thought that was neat. They said they all received a certificate for participation. I attended Memory Magic with Donald and Edgar. We're trying to memorize and remember people's names. And how'd you guys do with that? Any luck?
Not too much.
I'm working on it. And the one technique that he said, he said when you are introducing somebody, you should say that name first before you say anything else. So instead of saying, "Nice to meet you, John," they would say, "John, nice to meet you." So that's the first word out of your mouth is that person's name. And then, and this wasn't really working for me. They said you should make an association or an image to go with that name to facilitate the memorization. And so, of course, I was going, John. I'm going, what can I think of about John? Well, I guess Farmer John, but I was thinking Johnny Jump Up. But then I thought, but then you're kind of changing the name. That's kind of what he was doing. You know, I thought I would probably end up calling the person Johnny when they go by John. the person Johnny when they go by John. But I have used the technique of saying the person's name first, and I have seen that is, you know, it has stuck in my mind a little bit longer than it would have in the past. So, I guess it works. And the last class I attended, it was actually with Perry, was Communicating In An Emergency. And I liked that class. I liked all the classes, and I was, kind of hard to choose between which classes you wanted to take, because some of the ones I wanted to take overlap with other ones that I wanted to take. But, again, you know, they talk about, you know, mostly everybody uses social media, especially the younger crowd, younger generation, but, you know, we do face the challenges in emergencies where those who lack technology, especially the elderly. And they were saying that, you know, in society now, everybody is information society. Everybody wants to know the answers to everything right away. They don't want to wait for, you know, information to come out and be, and develop. And they had mentioned that in the case of the, I think it was the Columbia Mall shooting, that social media was used to quell rumors that were going around and to give assistance to those who were inside of the mall. They were able to communicate with the people inside as rumors were going on of there were multiple shooters, and they were able to communicate through Facebook and Twitter and such for the people who were stuck inside the mall for that situation. And they said, just make sure that the information that you give is given, receive, or is coordinated with all the different sources. And it's the town officials, police department, newspaper, FEMA, MEMA. They said if there's no information to report, report that there's no additional information that way, they aren't waiting around for something. And they said, once you share something on social media, within 10 seconds, it can be shared to other people. So if you think about how quickly that information can spread, and of course, you want it to be accurate information, so you're not scaring the living daylights out of everybody. And it, the one line from the class that's kind of, I thought summed up the class, that information matters, sources do not matter. So when people are out there looking for information of what's going on, they don't always care who's saying it. That could be the person next door who's saying it, and they just want the information. They don't care if it's really accurate or what the source is. But they also did say that social media can be used in preparation for future disasters. And, you know, just things like hurricane, you know, giving out hurricane information, preparedness information during hurricanes, hurricane season. And it said after disasters is when readership and followers go up because people, you know, like the information that they had received. So I will give you the unedited version, Dawn, of my two-page notes. That's all I have.
Okay. Just to, so everybody knows that a lot of these classes we take while we're in Ocean City at the MML Convention, or if you're at a MAKO Convention, they are accredited classes that you take through University of Maryland. And once you get so many credits, you get a certificate from University of Maryland that you, it's almost like a college credit. So, MML's been doing this for quite some time. I think I graduated through the class back in, I don't know, years ago, 2006, 2007, or something like that. But, so every year, they do get new graduates and you can keep up with the classes every year. So that is a very helpful program.
Edgar?
Okay. Let's see, Monday, I took the ethics class. Then after that, went to the General Assembly. And then I had lunch, and then I went to Challenges Of Improvement Economics. And then I went, after that, I went to Economic Development For Small Towns. And then Tuesday, I went to Town Planning, the Energy Elements. And then, after that, I went to the Small Town Discussion Forum. And then I went to lunch, and then Tuesday afternoon, I went through the exhibits that they had. And then Wednesday morning, I went through the, wait a minute, I missed the class here.
Memory Magic. So you forgot. It's not working for you, Edgar. You need to go back.
I jumped over that one. And then Wednesday, I took the physical benefit of the Smolder Planning Division. And last year, I got all my credits, so should be graduating this year, should get my certificate.
Good. Good. And that ethics meeting, they have something different, either in the summer convention, the fall convention, and it changes. I don't know how anybody can ever keep up with that. That's really a pain, but the classes are helpful.
Okay, the Magic Memory now. I remember a name.
Memory Magic.
Dave. I met him on the boardwalk, 5:30 in the morning. His name's from Australia, so I won't forget. If I think of Australia, I'll think of Dave. So, I guess it's working a little bit. One of the meetings I also went to was Sustainability and How To Save Taxpayers' Dollars, which Jared's already said, we're trying to get grants for our park. So, if we get the grants, we don't have to use our money. So that's, that's one of the issues. I also went to the General Session, which we had two speakers, Bob Beckel and Cal Thomas, and their theme was Common Ground. And I'm sure everyone that went there got a little something different out of it. What I got of it mostly was that our government is not working for the people at all. It's working for themselves. It doesn't matter which party you belong to. Their agenda is what I can get for myself or for the party. We're being left behind. And another issue they brought up was, as everyone knows, we have a lot of conflict going on in this world, and especially from the Middle East. And we've got people coming in from the Middle East that we're losing track of. They have no, the government has no idea where they're at. We just, as you know, we just had five Marines killed, or former Marines killed, for that very reason. So, we've, America has to wake up, or the government has to wake up, and we've got to get a handle on this situation, because it's going to affect everybody, doesn't matter what mall, it could be in a mall or any state, so, or any town. So, somebody better be paying attention on it. I also went to responding to civil unrest. On the panelists, there was four law officers, some of them retired but are still in the program. One of them was a retard from the state police. He was in charge of all of Maryland State Police. And one of the first things he said was, we need to have, police officers need body cameras. And as I go on, I'll tell you why in a little bit. Another one was, another panelist was from the Baltimore City. He was raised in the projects. He came up from absolutely nothing. He moved up to, almost to the top of the organization. The opportunities are out there for everybody. They had all these rides down there. Somebody wants what you have and not work for it. But it also starts at the, at the home level, whether it's your parents or your grandparents or whatever. You need to take responsibility in what's right and what's wrong. So, of course, you know, the Baltimore City Police took an awful beating down there. See, people were frustrated. Well, the riders were frustrated. Well, there's a lot of schools down there, you can't drop out of school and get a good job. So, the opportunities are there. All you've got to do is smart enough to take advantage of them. So I fast forward over to another class I went to. It was called Cops, Liability, and Video Taping. And we'll go back on, and I saw, they give a video of what actually happened. We also have an issue with the media, social media, getting people, they only show the one side of it, or get people into a frizzy, which they have. It starts clear back into Ferguson's. They just went on CNN, went on and on and on, on the Brown, the guy who had his arms up, guy didn't have his arms up, had his arms down. There was eyewitnesses, but he didn't have a body camera on. You've rarely ever heard, I only ever heard it one time, mention that it wasn't like they kept saying. So, and they showed a video of this officer got a call. The people were standing out, on the, the plaintiffs were standing out there on the yard. There was domestic issues. So, they, pretty soon, they ended up doing, in a shouting, shoving match. You could see all this happening, down on the street, wrestling around, so on and so forth. Other, other officers came. So, when it was all done, the person that pushed the cop and locked him up. But shortly after that, there was a lawsuit. Now, there are people that filed a lawsuit and the lawyer, they didn't know that he had a camera. And they were suing for millions of dollars. And then they put, they want to throw the race card in there because the guy was white, the cop was white, and the plaintiff was black. So, without that video, without the body camera, it's, there's a two sides to this thing. It's going to save the law, that's going to save the cities, it's going to save the law enforcers, the officers. It's, it's just hard to tell how much money it would save them because it's not true. A lot of this stuff is not true. And I spoke with a retired state trooper. He said body cameras is, is the best thing that's ever come along for an officer. It'll weed out the bad cops, or make them be more careful. And it helped the ones that are doing the right thing. It proves what they're, what they're saying is true. And I just threw this in, I think I read in the paper yesterday where Baltimore City has, has put out like $12 million since 2010. So, it's cost them a lot of money. Maybe if they had body cameras, it wouldn't have cost them all that kind of money. So, I think the, I know there's a lot of controversy, well, you're taking my rights away, blah, blah, blah. But I think it's a good thing, so we'll see how this pans out. And that's about all I have.
During the 2015 conference, it was called Calm Yields Civility, which is Courtesy, Align, Learn, and Move Forward. Donald talked about the keynote speakers, the political analysts, Bob Beckel, who's a Democrat, and Cal Thomas, who is a Republican. And their talk was titled Common Ground. And they definitely have different views on every subject, as we have all said. Their goal was to show us that bridges can be forged between differences, and agreements can be made, all while maintaining respect. I bought this book that Cal Thomas wrote. It was awesome. So if you guys want to read it, you should. It's called What Works. It's a common sense political refresher, just like Donald had said. It focuses on what promotes the general welfare of people regardless of their party, and it's about finding solutions. So, and I also took many notes and picked up handouts from my classes, which were Small Town Sustainability, which was Greening Your Community, four case studies. The Pit In The Pendulum, Challenges Of An Improving Maryland Economy. That class was fast-paced and full of information. Edgar and I were a little overwhelmed, but I learned a lot. Economic Development Of Small Towns, which is Unique Approaches With A Variety Of Strategies For Us. Statewide Interoperability. This was a Public Safety Agencies Sharing Data And The Plans To Broaden The Network. That was very enlightening, how they act and react with each other and what is necessary to move forward. Addressing Our Aging Water And Sewer Infrastructure, Covered Rehabilitation Projects. They explained the perma loggers that Union Bridge just purchased in depth. And Finding Leaks Will Save Us So Much Money In This Town, and I'm very excited to have attended that class. I met a lot of new people. I swapped a lot of business cards, and I learned a lot at this conference. This is one of the better conferences that I've been to since being on the council. And I hope what I've learned in this training will benefit the town of Union Bridge. Since our last meeting, I've had no water calls. Yay. Also, on a side note, instead of having a national night out, Union Bridge has, the council has decided that we will have a drug awareness evening, symposium, whatever we would end up calling it, with a to-be-announced date. Our goal is October, and many agencies in the county are interested in helping participate with this. There is a lot to be learned in this area, and we're really looking forward to this evening.
September will be our MML meeting, our quarterly meeting here in Union Bridge at the Community Center. October, there will be a parade in town. It's the Francis Guy Key Football, I don't know if they call it Football.
Homecoming? Is it Homecoming?
It's the Homecoming Dance, or Homecoming, not the dance, but it'd be for their Homecoming Football Game. That will be on a Wednesday evening from, it's a strange time. It's like, I think it's.
Like 5:00?
5:00 or 5:30, and it only lasts about a half an hour. They go town to town. The year before last, it was in Tawny Town, was the first one they had. Last year, they were in the town of New Windsor, and this year, they're coming in Union Bridge. The Marion Council's welcome to ride in the parade. Like I said, it's a shirt parade. Any business that wants to get in the parade, to school, they, this, Francis Guy Key is taking care of the whole parade, everything. I had a meeting with them on the parade route. They're working with the fire company on their parade route, and everything else is done by the school, so.
What day was that, in October? Do you have a specific day, just a Wednesday?
It's, what is this, the best thing I ever got? Still haven't worked everything down. October the 7th.
7th, okay, thank you.
So, that will be a nice little parade for the town of Union Bridge. Last year's parade in New Windsor, like I said, took a half hour, 40 minutes, and they had a lot of people that was there to watch the parade, same as Tawny Town the year before. So, it's going to be a very nice event. And then, as soon as they get done the parade, they go to Key, and then they have a Homecoming Football Game the same night. So, that's a very nice something for the town to participate in and go out to school and watch the game after that's over. So, it's a very, very enjoyable evening. And I guess that's about it. Does anybody else have anything?
One more thing. We discussed in our work session, an issue up on Schroner's Court. I went up and looked the grievance over, and I thought about it, and I came back, and I spoke with Perry about it. We are not going to be involved in their grievances. They have their own rules and regulations they go by. We're not playing comp and getting in the middle of something that, that really, we have no business in. So, that's, they have a manager up there, and they're handling the situations. If a person wants to come down and have a grievance, fine, they can come down to the town, that's, that's okay too. But we're not going to be overruling what their rules are, so.
Or August the 8th, which is a week from this Saturday, the fire company is having their big cash drawing. Anybody that's interested, it's an, it starts at 2 o'clock in the afternoon at the Fire Hall. It's a very cheap event, $5, all you can eat. It's food during the afternoon. They have drawings from 2:00 in the afternoon until 8:00 at eating every 10 minutes. And you can win some good money if your name's drawn, you have, it's a four-digit number, you have two numbers on a ticket. So that's a very good community event. It's a good way for the fire companies to make some money. So anybody that's interested in going to that, I'm sure that they will be glad to have your money, be glad for you to come and help if you want to help. be glad to have your money, be glad for you to come and help if you want to help. And, uh, it's, it's, uh, it's just, I'll announce that because the fire company is a big, big supporter of the town. And without the fire companies in your town that are volunteers, we would have to raise taxes and come up with a lot more money to have paid people. So, uh, just to let everybody know, come out that day and support the fire companies and they support us.
I attended that last year, Perry, the first one that they did. I think that was the first one they did.
Yes.
Um, it was actually a pretty good time. The food was good. They had things you could do outside to, you didn't have to sit there at the table waiting for the numbers to come out every time. They had things you could do inside, things you could do outside. It was a good chance to talk to people you might not have seen for a while, you know, meet new people, catch up with old acquaintances and support the fire company at the same time. So it, it is actually a good, it, it's a fun time.
It is. Very good. Hope to see you there. If we have nothing else, we're in line for a German here this evening. Our next meeting will be, work session will be August the 10th. The next council meeting will be August the 24th.
I make a motion that we adjourn.
I'll second it.
A motion and a second. Any questions? Here you go. All those in favor, rise.
Aye.
No, the motion's carried. Thank you very much.